It's 4:02 on July 6th. My name is Shane Blazer. I'm the mayor. Let's take a roll call. Jay? We have Jay Bemke, Tom Bray. Lee Tao? Are you online, on the phone? Shane Burkhardt?
Here.
Dan Hanson?
Yes.
I think Susan Feath, did I call her up?
Yes.
Okay, Susan's here too. We're also Su Shil, City Attorney, Kyle Kearns, Community Development Director, and Joe Terry, Public Works Director. First item of business is approval of the reports from the June 1st and June 15th Planning Commission meeting. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Bemke to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bray. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Second item on business, or second item of business is Plan 20-0486, Dishar Residential LLC, Jeff Dishar, for a request to register a non-conforming use daycare within an M1 general industrial zoning district at 1421 Pepper Avenue, parcel ID 3412380. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. Just gonna try to bring up the agenda here so you guys can follow along. Basically, this item, we have a request to register a non-conforming use, and the property is on Pepper Avenue. It's just over two acres. It's formerly the YMCA Fitness Center that previously operated the facility, and prior to the YMCA, it was another private entity that operated the facility. There's 70 parking stalls on site. It's currently zoned M1, general industrial district, and the request is to operate an adult daycare facility. Daycare uses are prohibited in this district, the M1 zoning district, except for a group daycare that's in relation to a company. And in this case, the zoning code also allows for the continuation of a similar non-conforming use. As staff researched this and worked with the applicant, it became apparent that the request was for, or the previous daycare use was not a primary use within the building. It was actually an accessory use to the fitness use, meaning that the fitness use was the primary use that people patronized the facility for, and then when they would arrive on site, they could drop off their children at the daycare component of the use. And you'll find in one of the handouts that was provided, an email as well as provided to you today, from the YMCA attesting to that use as a drop-in childcare program. And because of that use, it would not necessarily be considered primary in nature, and therefore staff has found that the requested use of, for an adult daycare facility in there would not be a one-for-one transition, so to speak, of non-conforming uses, that in fact, the requested adult daycare use would be more intense than the previous drop-in fitness daycare, and you can't technically create a more intense non-conforming use. And so staff would recommend to deny this request, again, for the reasons identified on the screen, but also would note that when staff looked at the surrounding area, the manufacturing or industrial zoning is really unique because it's surrounded by residences, and that would allow for this facility to operate a, you know, large-scale manufacturer that creates noise and dust and lighting, and I don't think it would be a good fit for the building or the property, given the surrounding residences. So I think certainly moving forward to allow for more appropriate uses like a daycare use in the facility, a rezoning should be pursued rather than, again, this non-conforming continuation. So I think that would be an option moving forward to allow for a daycare use in there, but we've identified that unfortunately, the, as we've received more information, that the non-conforming use would be more intense that's requested than the previous daycare use within the facility.
Thank you. Is Mr. Dishar here that wants to speak?
Jeff, I believe you're-
I am here. I am present. I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to digest what has been said, I guess, to, how much say do I have on that, I guess, or is there anything else more I can say to persuade this from, it's a great service, but I really only bought the building for this purpose and then didn't even, I thought it would fit because of that. They offer a great service. They're out of faith where they're at, and, you know, I can give you a long list of things that, but what would be my next move, I guess, to be able to get it to happen? And, yeah, I'm not sure what else I can say.
Mr. Kearns, I think his next, his question was next use, or next step would be to request a change in zoning?
Well, you know, the Plan Commission certainly should act on the, you know, the extension or the registration of the non-conforming use. Certainly, the Plan Commission has the authority to interpret the code differently than I do if they feel as though the previous drop-in daycare use was fitting and would match with the proposed adult daycare, or if they do not, or if they would recognize my recommendation and deny that, then I think a way that would be fitting, a way to pursue the adult daycare would be a rezoning request in the future. Just given what I've seen with the surrounding area, the surrounding uses, the surrounding zoning, I think a rezoning to a more appropriate either neighborhood commercial use or the general commercial use would be fitting rather than the industrial zoning that's currently on the property.
Kyle, could you explain what you're trying to say when you say it would be more intense than the previous childcare area? I'm envisioning the previous YMCA where you had cars, people coming in constantly, in and out, in and out, in and out, all day. So what would, what would more intense be in terms of this proposal?
Sure. So when we're comparing the use, we're comparing the daycare uses, not necessarily the fitness use. So the daycare use was an accessory use to the fitness use. So it wasn't the primary use. So when you're looking at intensity of a use with the request for adult daycare, as the primary use in the facility, it's likely going to take up a much larger footprint of the facility than the previous drop-in use took. It's likely going to be in a larger capacity. They're likely going to be licensed through the state, and there are other, you know, requirements from a daycare standpoint to be kind of a full-fledged daycare operation than I think the previous drop-in daycare use was. So just in comparing the daycare uses on the site. Typically, when you have a non-conforming use, you can continue said non-conforming use as long as it doesn't lapse or cease for a period of 12 months or more, or more than 12 months. Or you can have a new, the same use take over. So, for example, if there was a non-conforming bar in a facility, another, you know, that bar could sell to another bar user, and that non-conforming use could continue. So in this case, the same would be permitted. If another fitness user wanted to come use the facility for the same purpose, as a fitness center, as the primary use with drop-in daycare as an accessory use, that would be permitted, and I think would be appropriate to register it as a non-conforming use. But just solely as an adult daycare facility, I feel it would be an increase in the intensity of the daycare use.
Anything further, Mr. Bray?
Well, I just hope that we can try to figure out a way that this gentleman who has invested in a building that, quite honestly, doesn't have a whole lot of uses to it, can work it out so that he can open and operate it. I understand it not being industrial. I think there used to be a plastics plant in that area, and that's probably how it ended up industrial. So I, I mean, to change the zoning, to be able to allow this to take place, seems to make sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the daycare use there does make very good sense. So whatever we have to do to go through the right procedures to make that happen, because I think this is a very good use of that site there. So I'm glad to see that, you know, stuff is happening and buildings being reused and stuff like that. So I think we need to do whatever we can to do it properly, which is probably doing the rezoning of it.
Thank you.
May I speak, this is Jeff Dishar?
Yes, please.
The only issue with changing zoning would be, it would limit me on the rest of the building. I've got part of a building would be taken up, and then I don't want to create a heavy traffic or a business sort of sense to the spot. I don't think it's actually conducive to it. It's off to the side. It really isn't a retail space that I would see would be really fitting. So that'd be the only fear I have. The nice thing about the M1 is that I can actually use it for storage if needed be, which would be, and I don't want to go into that because it's a total different subject, but it is, you know, being in that area with all the condos around there and stuff like that, it does actually open up the fact that I could use it for storage if I need to or whatever in that, you know. So changing it from M1 also makes it difficult on that end, I guess. So that's the only holdup I do have with that, I guess, so.
Mr. Kearns, is the appropriate zoning would that allow for storage?
Personal storage in the zoning code is only allowed in the industrial district. So if you rezoned it to a commercial classification, you would not be able to do a personal storage use. You might be able to do, you know, an accessory storage use. For example, if you had a, you know, a permitted business operating there as a primary use, they could store their equipment there, but personal storage, like mini warehousing, would not be permitted in a commercial district. The only other avenue then to operate a daycare type use under the current zoning district would be a zoning variance, a use variance. You know, I will say that use variances and any variances are typically pretty difficult to get, but that would be another avenue that would go to a separate board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, for review.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Go ahead, Mr. Bemke.
So, Mr. Dishar, is that correct? Or Kyle, either one. Was this part of the request, this storage, in this request for?
No, the storage was not. It was something that we talked about, myself and the applicant, in terms of, you know, his long-term plans with the facility, and I think we even discussed possibly rezoning, and I think the thought was, well, this might be an avenue, but again, not recognizing, you know, to what extent the daycare use previously existed within the facility, I think was what was, you know, most in question.
Thank you. So either way, if it's a daycare, it would need, you know, it couldn't stay, you couldn't do both in either of the zonings? Correct? You couldn't have a daycare and storage together in the M1 or in the other zoning that potentially could be proposed?
Yeah, the only daycare that's allowed within this zoning district is what's called group daycare as company. So the example would be if, if you're a large business that employs, you know, let's say Metalco, and they want to have a very small daycare center within the facility for their employees, that would require a conditional use permit and would be permitted, but it has to be tied to, you know, a principal use to the facility. So, you know, in this case, storage, whether it's, you know, mini warehousing or internal storage, while it could be classified as the primary use, I don't know if you could, you could then tie a accessory use of daycare to a storage-type use. I think they more so stand on their own, and it would be considered a mixed-use type of building then.
Okay. So my point is just that either zoning will require some exception potentially to allow the other.
Right.
So realistically, it becomes down to what, what's the primary use of that building, or what Mr. Dishar wants the primary use to be? And then go from the zoning from there, maybe?
Correct.
Even though our issue right now is whether to approve or not approve this use in this
The other option is to amend the zoning code. The council or Plan Commission staff or an applicant can certainly make a request to amend the zoning code and place a use in a different zoning district. But again, I think, you know, that, I would recommend caution in that regard because once you move uses around, you can create non-conforming uses in other districts, and you can open the door to, you know, mini warehousing in areas maybe you don't see it fit in your residential neighborhoods and so forth.
Yeah, I think after a considerable amount of time, this commission has put in this previously and expense, we probably don't want to start haphazardly changing it, which I don't support at this point. So I guess the issue at hand is to register the non-conforming use daycare within M1. Does anybody have anything further they'd like to add? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. Oh, Michelle?
Yeah, actually, I reached the same conclusion as Kyle, but I probably would want to stress that it's, it'd be my opinion that the non-conform, the only non-conforming use that he can ask to be registered would be the primary non-conforming use, which is the fitness center. So the daycare was, as Kyle said, was the accessory use. I don't think you can register the accessory use necessarily because, as Kyle said, it was kind of attendant to the, it was almost like a group daycare situation in a way. It was the, the primary activity was the fitness center, and even prior to the Y being there, it was, I remember it being King Richard's courts, and so that was what made it, that's what made it non-conforming. The daycare was just kind of an incidental thing. So now to come in and say, well, I want to register the daycare as the legal non-conforming use, I don't, can't see that without the primary being the fitness center. The other alternative, which Kyle and I spoke about, was to register it as a fitness center, but then convert, there's such a thing as converting the non-conforming use to another use. That would require a public hearing, that would, you know, so you might as well just rezone it and do it the correct way. Now, the wrinkle to, that I was not aware of was the whole storage thing, and obviously that complicates things, but otherwise, based on just putting a daycare there, the simplest and most proper way to do it would be to just rezone it to B2 or B3. Would both of those probably work? But that would more than likely exclude storage, although there may be ways to address that,
Thank you. Commission, what is your wishes?
I guess I understand, you know, if we go forward denying this, but I guess my question to the rest of the commission is, do we have concerns in general with what's trying to happen there, and are we committed to helping him find an avenue to make this happen?
I personally think it's a great use of the space and the spot, and given the area of what he wants to do. That's just my personal opinion. But I think that we need to do it properly through zoning.
Okay, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't just killing it and killing it for good, that we're still committed to helping them get this to happen.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add a question. This is Susan. Is it necessary to go through two meetings in order to make this work, or this is all able to be accomplished today?
Unfortunately, because it wasn't identified properly, we would have to create another agenda, and rezonings in particular require a public hearing, so you'd also have to provide adequate notice within the paper. And so you're looking at, even if we had a special Plan Commission meeting, likely three weeks would be the soonest we could act on this as Plan Commission, and obviously then Plan Commission makes a recommendation to council. So council would be the final body that would have a determining factor in the request.
Well, it's just my opinion that the M1 really doesn't apply to that entire area anymore. We've changed the nature of that entire area to something very different, and I think that an adult daycare center would be very beneficial for a lot of the people who live in that area right now. And in that respect, I think it should be moved along.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to deny the request for the non-conforming use.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Ms. Feath. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Mr. Dishar, are you still in line?
Yeah.
I recommend maybe you reach out to Mr. Kearns tomorrow, where you guys can kind of coordinate next step.
Okay.
Thank you. Item three is Plan 20-0455. Teresa Cashman requests for a site plan amendment review to construct a café building with a drive-through at 3820 Eighth Street South, parcel ID 3413806. Mr. Kearns?
This request was before Plan Commission in April, in which the Plan Commission and the common council approved the site plan for this coffee shop. The applicant has since made some major changes to the facility and to the parking lot, which required the site plan to come back before Plan Commission for those approvals, as they were considered major and could not be approved by staff. So I'll try to be quick. Just note that, you know, the building, I think, shrunk by about 1,000 square feet. So I think it was just over 2,000. Now it's 1,202 square feet. There are 13 parking stalls. Previously, I think there were 19 or 21. The zoning hasn't changed. It's still B2, general commercial district. The use will remain the same, and again, within this district, it requires a site plan review and architectural review. Here's the lot for the property, and upon staff's review, the only thing worth noting is that, again, there is more than 35% of the parking that exists within the front of the building, and the code requires that the remaining portion be from the front plane of the building to the rear of the site, so as not to create parking up front. However, this body can approve up to 50% of parking within the front of the building. So I would recommend, given the drive-through is in the rear of the site, given the small size of the site, the creek to the south, that the Plan Commission do approve 50% of the parking in front of the building. This would still require the applicant to make some minor modifications to the site plan. They would either have to remove one or two stalls or try to relocate them behind the front plane of the building. But again, I feel as though it is fitting. The landscaping requirements on the landscaping plan are met for the most part, except for the parking area landscaping. So they need additional points that are required for the parking landscaping, parking lot landscaping, and so we would request that those be updated on a landscaping plan and submitted for staff's review, including additional information regarding the buffer yard. So the code also requires a landscape buffer on the west side of the property nearest the adjacent residential, and that landscape buffer was not identified on the plans. From an architectural standpoint, we feel as though the code requirements are met. The building is comprised primarily of glass and aluminum or metal fascia, and I believe it's still incorporating a shipping container that stood vertically as the entrance area, and there's also a large glass garage door to open the space to outdoor seating. So, you know, here's some of the updated plans on the screen. Again, much smaller site. The existing driveway is being utilized, and the drive-through will be accessed through the site to the rear and then come out on the south side before exiting on the same driveway. Here's the landscaping plan, and again, there's a buffer yard that's required along the west side of the site, and additional parking lot landscaping that's needed. With that being said, we would recommend approval with the conditions outlined on page one of the staff report, which are shown on the screen.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Kearns? Oh, man, making a lot of noise here. Is Teresa here by chance?
I believe she is on the call.
Oh. Did you have anything you want to add?
I do not have anything I want to say. I do have my architect, who is also present, that he may be better to answer any questions or add if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for, I believe, Mr. Lucas was the architect and, or Ms. Cashman?
This is Joe Lucas. I have a question about what we are referring to in, on the site, the three spaces further east of a curbside pickup. And I know there's probably some gray area there, but given the nature of the food service industry now and what we think in the foreseeable future, those are, we don't consider those parking spaces, and I know, I see why you would, but is there any consideration of those being pickup, you know, just trying to make it convenient for the customers to move forward and wait for an order if it's, you know, five minutes or something, and the person behind them only needs a minute for a cup of coffee?
Currently, the code only allows Plan Commission to approve 50% of the parking on site. There really is no other mechanism other than a zoning variance that would permit that. So again, you know, it could be, it could be accommodated by, you know, taking one or two of these stalls and locating them over here, or maybe doing parallel stalls, you know, extending the driveway slightly to the north and doing parallel stalls up here. Again, the maximum requirement is only 50% of the total stalls on site can be up front in front of the plane of the building, which would extend basically from this corner to the north, and this corner to the south would be considered the front yard area.
Commissioners, any further questions? Kyle, can you explain the process again for the approval of up to 50% of the parking in the front?
Sure. So the code requires normally that there's 30, only 35% of the parking can be in the front yard. So the code requires normally that there's 30, only 35% of the parking can be in the front yard, which is basically from the front plane of the building toward the street. However, the Plan Commission can approve up to 50% of the parking. So again, if somebody has 50 parking stalls on the site total, only 25 of them can be within the front yard area. The rest have to be on the back of the site or from the front of the building back. So in this case, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight stalls out of the 13 on-site that are within the front plane of the building, which is over 50%. And the maximum this body can approve is the 50%. So that would require either removing parking stalls on-site or relocating them so they're behind the front plane of the building.
Mr. Terry?
Just to also partly maybe explain, Jay. So if there were a motion to approve with the recommendations by staff, then that action that you're asking about is taken care of through the motion? Yes.
Correct. You could only approve 50%. You could not approve the plan as it's currently provided to us.
Because it exceeds the 50%.
Because it's in violation of the 50%, which is the maximum that Plan Commission can approve under the code.
When we looked at this in April, they had stall, or parking stalls in the back, then, didn't they?
They had additional parking. I think, again, 19 or 21 seems to be the number. But again, they also, this was also an issue with that site plan. So again, we recommended as staff that the 50% be approved, and it ultimately was, which would have also required them to move a couple parking stalls around. Certainly, you know, I understand from a business standpoint, this is not ideal. It's going to probably increase pavement on other, you know, locations of the site to meet the requirement. But it basically exists, so you don't have businesses along Eighth Street that are a sea of asphalt before you get to the building. The idea was to pull the buildings closer to the street to create more of a walkable aesthetically pleasing environment and put parking in the back of buildings or the sides of buildings and have the building facade be the showcase along Eighth Street.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Have you taken into consideration the green space that is the rest of the lot, where the creek is and the natural space that we're also keeping to kind of achieve that goal?
So, again, we're somewhat limited with regards to the code in this case, because the code says the maximum that Plan Commission can approve is 50%. So while I certainly recognize the green space and maintaining the existing trees on the site, which can be accounted for during the, for the buffer yard on the west side of the site and possibly for the parking lot landscaping as well. You know, you'd have to identify what those species are and how many of them there are. And it's something we can continue to talk about. But with regards to the parking, the code's pretty clear that 50% is the maximum amount that can be approved via Plan Commission in front of the plane of the building.
Okay.
I guess to get things moving along, since we don't have any other options on the parking, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan amendment with staff recommendations.
I'll second that. For Kirk.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
This is Susan. I'm just wondering, you're saying that 50% of the parking, you can approve only 50% of the parking on the front side of the building, correct?
Correct.
Isn't this a simple, wouldn't a simple solution be to remove one of the three separate parking places for idling to wait for your order or whatever the description was? But fix those three parallel parking places that are parallel to Eighth Street? I don't see what the problem is here.
Correct. There are a number of solutions. They could remove parking on-site or they could relocate parking on-site. Their parking requirement is pretty low. I think it was five stalls with regards to square footage of the building, plus any additional stalls per employee that's within the facility. And I wouldn't see there being more than maybe three to five employees within the facility. So, you know, with a parking requirement then of eight to 10, you know, they certainly could remove a few stalls and still meet the parking requirement, or they could relocate them on-site. Obviously, they, as a business, they know how many parking stalls they need for their employees and to succeed with their customers. So there was, you know, those two options exist to meet that parking requirement.
Thank you.
So anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan amendment with staff recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Next item of business is Plan 20-0480. Michelle Sweeney and Virginia Shalutki? Sorry about that. Public hearing and action on request for conditional use permit to operate a hobby dog kennel at 1121 Gardner Street, parcel ID 3402931, zoned R2 mixed residential district. Mr. Kearns? Will I have you do an explanation, then we can do a public hearing?
Yep, sounds good. So the applicant is requesting to operate a hobby kennel, I think. First, I'm going to clarify the definition of a hobby kennel, which is somewhat misleading, but I think I'd like to clarify things because my staff report may have also led, been a little misleading. But on the screen, you'll see the definition of a hobby kennel, which is a place where five or more, but less than 11 adult dogs or other pet animals are kept for the occupants' private, non-commercial purposes. The term also includes the sale and training of up to two litters per year. Note, a commercial kennel is considered a principal use and is therefore listed in Series 9. Again, so a commercial kennel is a separate use described within the zoning code. It goes on to identify further under supplemental standards. If the keeping of animals allowed as a hobby kennel becomes a nuisance to the neighborhood, as determined by the Planning Commission or the common council, the common council may take appropriate steps, terminate the use, consistent with Article 5. So with that being said, you know, the applicant has made a request to operate, I think it's the applicant's intent to continue to operate as they have been previously, which, to my knowledge, is used as a boarding kennel, as well as a grooming facility and kind of like a doggy daycare. And again, the applicant is represented here today and can provide further information in regards to the business. I will note that, you know, basing my review off the review criteria, you know, the lot is quite large, because there are two lots that are both fenced in in this instance. The access to the site is via a driveway on Gardner Street, and the street then terminates at a dead end in front of the property. Furthermore, the westernmost side of the site borders River View Expressway. And again, hobby kennels, as previously defined, are a conditional use within the R2 district. This property is zoned R2. And therefore, to operate a hobby kennel as described, the applicant is seeking that conditional use permit request. In my staff report, I did note that, again, which may have added to some confusion, that with regards to the sale and training of up to two little litters of year, litters per year, kind of contradicts the commercial character and nature of it. But I think the intent with regards to that interpretation, after speaking with the city attorney as well, is that it's more so for a breeder, a dog breeder, that were to be raising a litter, training those dogs, and then, you know, selling those dogs off-site or, you know, selling those dogs online, like many breeders operate. Not necessarily, you know, dog sales and training from a commercial standpoint. With regards, again, strictly to the hobby kennel use, however, you know, staff does feel as though, you know, appropriate measures are in place, that the fencing exists, the site is large enough. The applicant has indicated that dog waste is cleaned up multiple times a day. Dogs are kept inside. Things appear to be orderly and neat on-site. And, you know, with that being said, staff would recommend approval of the hobby kennel type use. I do want to note that with regards to the conditions of approval, there are a few of them on the screen and in your staff report. But there are two additional conditions that I would add. The first of which being that no boarding, grooming, animal daycare or other commercial pet services shall occur on the property. And a pet exemption license shall also be obtained with the Community Development Department.
Yep, just a minute. Yeah, we'll do a public hearing shortly, just hold on.
Yep, so that's it.
Okay.
So those two added conditions into the ones, onto the ones on the screen and on page one of the staff report.
So let's start the public hearing. And let's start with the people that probably fair to speak in favor of the conditional use permit. I would assume the applicant would probably like to speak in favor of the... Does anybody want to, if you want to... So this will be the time, so when you come up to the microphone...
I was just going to ask if everyone could make sure that they clearly state their name so I can get it recorded.
And so if you could state your name and your address. And then, so we're only, we're taking people in favor of it. And then, once we get through that, then we'll take people that are against it. And just, that's how we'll run it. So if somebody would like to speak in favor of it, please have the microphone and on the bottom, there's a push. Just make sure the light's green. Thank you. And if you could state your name and address.
I'm Michelle Sweeney at 1121 Gardner Street. I guess all I have to say is we have been operating this for the last couple of years. I didn't realize we were supposed to have the conditional use permit. But as soon as we were made aware that we were supposed to have it, then we started the process of applying for that. As far as I know, there's only been one complaint from one neighbor behind us, which we have handled by not letting the dogs out all at the same time. We let two or three out together. We're usually out there with them. If we're not, we're listening for barking. If there's barking, we bring them back in. So we try and make sure that there's not a nuisance moving on to the neighborhood. We keep things clean. My only question is that Mr. Kearns said that there's no daycare boarding or grooming allowed, but that's what we do, that's our entire business. So I don't understand if, so the hobby kennel, if you can board or if you can breed dogs and sell dogs, you still have that same amount of number of dogs on the property. So what's the difference whether they're there for daycare or we're raising them or whatever? There's still that number of dogs on the property. So that's my only question. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else would like to speak in favor of this project? Or this, I'm sorry, rezoning or conditional use, I'll get it right? You want to speak in favor, sir?
Yes.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
Jason Crone, 1111 Gardner Street, next-door neighbor. I have no problems with it. You hardly ever hear the dogs barking. When they are, it's no different than any other dogs in the neighborhood. As far as I'm concerned, this town needs more small businesses just like this. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Thank you, please state your name and address.
Tara Schneider, 1120 Gardner Street, also in that same little section right across the street. I would be an advocate for it. I've never once had to stop a conversation because of her dogs. And I've had, in my living room, and had to stop a conversation because someone couldn't hear me on the phone because of a loud truck, because of sirens, because of the train that we live next to. So when they put this in, I thought it was a brilliant use. I mean, if a dog barks, who's going to care? You've got this busy road. It, they've done nothing but improve the neighborhood. I don't know if you've driven past that place before, but they did get one of the oldest homes in that block of houses. And they've just, it looks lovely. I mean, beside from the dogs, they take very good care of it, with the dogs especially. That's much more difficult to do, and they take very good care of it. So we've never had a concern or a problem. I've got kids in the neighborhood that don't have any problems with the dogs being there. I think it's a benefit.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none. We'll take anybody that wishes to speak against this. Come on up, ma'am. Just state your name and address, please.
Yes, we had a very peaceful neighborhood. And she's got so many dogs there. And it's right in our backyard, and the dogs are barking all the time. They wake you up in the morning. And I mean, one dog starts barking and the rest of them start barking. She's got maybe six dogs at each time they come out. And it's not right, because there's the expressway there and the dogs go more towards our way. And the expressway, a lot of people walk that expressway. And the dogs all around the fence will be barking at them. It's just, I don't think that she should have that many dogs in the city. My name is Judith Greiner, and I live at 1130 Clark Street.
Thank you.
But I do not think, she's really running a daycare, I mean, a dog care center. But I mean, we, you just can't go out in the backyard and enjoy the backyard or anything. There's other people that sent in things and called in too. They're not pleased with it. So I wish you would look into this.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak against? If you could state your name and address, sir, please.
Ron Greiner at 1130 Clark Street, directly behind the dogs. I object to a kennel in the city. This is a residential area. And I know she's got two big German Shepherds, and I know how mean they can get. Because I go back there by my garden, and if there wasn't a fence there, I'd be in big trouble. So I object to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against? Okay. We did receive, what was it? We did receive, what was it? From a Joseph Hillmeyer, owners of 630 11th Avenue South. They spoke, they, they sent an email against the conditional use. We also received one from Nicholas and Madeline Palmquist at 1140 Clark Street, and they also, let me double-check here, I believe they're also speaking against... So this one wants it to be read out loud. Attorney Shell, should I read it out loud, the whole thing, do you think? Or just log it? Yes, correct. And they talk about it's a, it's a private use, but offers training and boarding and Talks about a commercial kennel and general use business is not, not permitted in this zoning, which Mr. Kern's kind of went through all this.
Are you going to read it? The kid here.
Oh, I can, if you want, I'll read it. Planning and zoning committee members, this letter is to serve as an official statement from public, from the public for review at the proposed hobby dog kennel at the above-stated address. Unfortunately, due to the short notice, we are unable to attend this hearing in person because of work schedules. Expected that these comments be read all aloud at the public hearing in accordance with the planning commission general procedure guidelines. First, this application should be declined due to the completeness and improper use of zoning district land use. This business should not be considered a hobby kennel, but rather a commercial kennel and general services establishment. According to the Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code, Appendix B, Land Uses, a hobby kennel is a place where five or more but less than 11 dogs or other pet animals are kept for the occupant's private, non-commercial purpose. Alternatively, a commercial kennel is a place where domesticated animals are housed for the purpose of boarding, breeding, training, or sale, i.e., an animal daycare, boarding kennels, dog motels, dog training centers. A general services establishment is a place that does not fit into any of the service categories specified, such as pet grooming shops. This business is not for occupants' private use, but offers training, boarding, doggy daycare, and pet grooming, per publicly available information on a Rough Ranch LLC website. Additionally, the website admits that this is a commercial kennel, kennel by comparing the business to other boarding facilities in Municipal Code, Appendix A, Land Use Mix Matrix. A commercial kennel and general service building is not permitted in the R2 mixed residential district, and the applicant should, applicant submitted documents to operation at, at that parcel. When the business currently is operated at a different parcel, as well as parcel at this other parcel, must be the two different parcels there. This is supported by Rough Ranch LLC web's webpage, which states, boarding dogs may enjoy running and playing in a half-acre fenced yard. If the committee continues to define the business, this business is in fact a hobby kennel, then the standard stating that the hobby kennel is not to become a nuisance to the neighborhood must be considered. On many occasions, the animals at this residence can be seen inconveniencing individuals walking on the public sidewalk as if they're outside when someone is walking by. They immediately run to the fence line, which is about two feet from the sidewalk, and bark while chasing the passerby. Additionally, many residents boarding this property must first check outside before entering their own backyard. As outdoor, outdoor activity, when the animals are not, are out, will not cause the same barking and chasing along the fence line. Numerous times before installing our own privacy fence, we would observe dogs barking at us through the fence as they saw us through the patio door while we were in our homes. This application should be declined because even without licensure, the, this business is a public nuisance. If approved, approved, it is only a matter of time before the commission will meet again to terminate the application consistent with the Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code, Article 5. Second, the application should be declined due to non-compliance of Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code requiring, requirements in Sections 11.01, .07, which state that no development shall be, shall be undertaken without the prior authorizations required by this chapter and applicable rules and regulations of the City of Wisconsin Rapids. This business has been accepting dogs for boarding, grooming, and daycare since 2018, and continues to run while this application is being reviewed. As supported by Rough Ranch LLC Facebook page, this is clear violation of zoning and no permit or approval of any kind should be granted that would benefit the parcel. Rather, after observing this clear violation, the committee shall determine that action is required for each day that the applicant has been operating without a municipally-approved in accordance with, with Code 11.22-02. Finally, as members of the planning commission, planning commission, or the planning and zoning committee, it is your responsibility to promote public health, safety, and welfare that is intended to conserve the value of buildings and encourage appropriate land use throughout the city. Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code 11.01.05. If permitted, this application proposes a significant barrier to parcel owners in surrounding area. If the property owner chooses to sell, not only do they have the barrier of the expressway and the proximity to the train tracks, there will now be a kennel in, in a once-private backyard. Thank you, Nicholas and Madeline Palmquist. And they've also included different photos of, um, webpages, Facebook, and services offered.
So, I got a question about this.
Hold on, sir. And then, from the police department, we did receive that there were three incidents involving dogs, one May 19th, one December 2nd, and of 2019, and March 16th of 2020. Yes, sir?
I do want to note that Deputy Chief Bryan did follow-up since that email and indicate that the complaints for those incidents were anonymous. There wasn't a warning or citation issued for either of them, and typically, he notes that the, the officer on the scene typically will not issue a warning or citation if a dog isn't heard barking. So, again, they are incidents, but not ones that have received citations or warnings. The other thing I do want to note is that I also received a call last week from Colleen Board at 640 11th Avenue South, who was against the request citing reasons being dogs barking and difficulty in walking the sidewalk.
Thank you. I think at this point, we can close the public hearing, and, sir, did you want to say something? Why don't you come up to the mic again?
I kind of laugh at the people saying that, you know, they're afraid to walk on sidewalk when there's a chain link fence between, I mean, you know, multiple people, and what's a dog do? A dog barks. You don't hear these dogs barking all day, but people whine about it because they hear a dog bark a couple times. I have a dog. I don't have a chain link fence up. I have another girl fence. My dog barks. So what's the next? We're going to give rid of all dogs in the neighborhood because they bark? That's stupid. You know, you're getting, you know, you're trying to promote small businesses in this community, and you're denying somebody a chance to have a small business in the community in a perfect location. They have a double lock. It is completely fenced in. The dogs aren't sitting outside barking all day long. They come outside to go to the bathroom, they go back in. So, I mean, people are pissing moan about it, but it's still an addition to this community.
Okay, thank you.
You know, he lives on the other side of it.
He may want to have them come up.
Can you use mics? Because otherwise, people can't hear you online, or through Zoom, or another teleconference. It does not, we don't have microphones that pick up the audience, so we need people to speak into microphones, so the commissioners on the other end can, you know...
Okay, he's talking, but he lives on the other side of them.
I live right next to them.
On the other side, though. Well, when the dogs come out, the dogs come out of the house, but it's our lots that are on the other side. And it's from All Out Way to the expressway. Now, when people walk there, they got five, six dogs out, and they're barking all around that fence to everybody walking there. Everybody's scared. I don't think that that's right.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I guess, now that the public hearing's closed, why don't commissioners, do you have any? I'm sorry, was it? I think, is that, did we catch everybody that wanted to speak? Okay. Absolutely.
I, I just have a quick question for the applicant, if you could come up, please. So have you, have you seen the, the conditions that they've laid out for you, and can you continue to run this business under those conditions?
I guess I don't understand, though, that where he said no boarding, daycare, or grooming. I don't understand that part. Because that's in the application, that's what I said that we do.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, under that zoning, that, that's not allowed?
Under that zoning, hobby kennel would not permit that use. I think historically, the definition of hobby kennel was provided, and we received our office an application, and followed up with processing the application. I think, you know, with the, the separate definition of commercial kennel, it's pretty clear that if you're doing more than breeding and training those dogs and/or selling those dogs as a breeder, you're beyond what a hobby kennel is.
Well, we don't breed dogs or sell dogs. That's not what we do.
So, so it goes back to my question. Under the conditions that they've laid out, can you continue to run your business?
Not if there's no boarding, daycare, or grooming.
Commissioners?
This is Burke. I, I had concerns with, that I don't feel like what has been, was being presented is a hobby kennel, and it is a commercial kennel. And it's very clear in my mind that it's a commercial kennel operation, and not, you
So I, I guess it really comes down to is, do you want, do you want to seek approval for the hobby kennel, or do you want to withdraw your application? Because it sounds like there's, there's nothing we could do to approve what you're currently doing there. That's, I, I, there isn't an option there, correct?
Correct. Commercial kennels would not be permitted in the R2 district, which would include boarding and grooming, and other pet services.
So I guess it's kind of what, what you're looking for at this point, which obviously isn't what you're realistically seeking, but... Correct. That's what I, I guess that's what it appears. So realistically, in that case, there's not an option to do what you're doing, so I don't know if you wanted to withdraw your application, or...
And that doesn't necessarily need to be determined tonight. I mean, the, the planning commission could still make a recommendation, and it could be withdrawn if she so chooses prior to the council meeting.
I guess personally, I'm not sure which direction to go, because obviously, what you're requesting or, or wanting to do is not allowed, and the option that's available is not a viable option either, so we're kind of stuck, I guess, you know? And the two options would be for us to vote to deny the hobby kennel, which you're not in, deny or approve the hobby kennel, which you're not interested probably in, or do nothing, and then, well, we've got to do something. Then we can't really, I don't think we can hold it over for councils, so... So realistically, we have, we have a, have a request here, and we have to vote the request up or down. If we vote to approve the hobby kennel, they can always withdraw it. If we vote to deny it, we're pretty much still in the same spot, because a hobby kennel isn't something you're looking for anyways.
So I have a question. So if I became some dog breeder, and was allowed to have a chain link and dog kennel property, I would still let them out in the back and move and play out there, just like we do now? So how is that any different?
Can you have her repeat that into the microphone?
Could you come up to the microphone? I get your question.
So if I became a dog breeder, and I was allowed to have up to 11 dogs on the property, I would still be letting them out the back to do their business and play out there and train? So how is it any different than what I do now?
Well, they, they have to be your, I mean, I guess the definitions are, it has to be your own dogs, it can't be other people's dogs. You can only have, breed two times in a year, and it's kind of a non-commercial, although technically, you could receive money for them, but they're, they're your own dogs, so there's not be people coming and going with different dogs. And I guess, I'm assuming, since a hobby kennel is a conditional use, you may very well be subject to some restrictions, which would not allow you to continue to have 11 dogs, or there might be, you know, certain restrictions depending on the layout of your property and such. It's not like you can be a hobby kennel with no restrictions. There's also, can be conditions on, on that to address perhaps the noise and, and so on, and maybe how many dogs are out at one, one time. So, I, I guess the basic premise is that we generally don't allow commercial businesses in residential areas, and there's a line that's drawn between a commercial kennel and a hobby kennel. And there's certain definitions, and it's clear, and you've admitted that you have a commercial kennel, and we cannot allow that in a residential district, so...
Well, I go to a hairdresser that's in a residential neighborhood, how is that different?
There are, there are certain, what they call home occupations, that are allowed in residential areas. But, and that is specifically defined in the code, the same as a hobby kennel, the same as a commercial kennel. So we're kind of stuck with the language that we have in our code. And I guess I would, I'd suggest if, if you don't want to be a hobby kennel, you can just withdraw the application and, you know, otherwise, they will go forward and probably vote on it. But it doesn't seem like that's something that you may be interested, or maybe you are, I guess. But they can't give you any more, you know, authority to do anything other than the hobby kennel.
Commission, what are your thoughts?
So I would move, based on the nature and, and use of the facility as current, that it does not comply, and we would have no other option but to deny the request.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burkhardt, did you second it?
The motion to deny it.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to second to deny a permit to operate a Hobby Kennel at that parcel? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Our next item of business is Plan 20-0484, James Gennigan, request for an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, specifically map 7-2, future land use map, to classify 610, or 610 and 620 Airport Avenue, parcel ID 3413366, from a mixed residential land use classification to a commercial or mixed-use land classification. Mr. Kearns?
So, if you don't mind, I will talk about items five and six together, just because they do relate to one another, and that's the way the staff report that was provided to the commission was presented as well. The first, well, I'll step back. The applicant came to the city inquiring about a vacant piece of property that has the zoning of R3, which is the medium-density multifamily residential district, and they wanted to operate a tanning salon, they're a current business within the community, and they're looking to construct their own tanning facility on this property. As part of a rezoning, however, all rezoning shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically, the comprehensive plan, future land use map. Again, the comprehensive plan is a document that the city amended in 2018, which governs all future land use within the entirety of the city, and specifically, the future land use map identifies what the future uses of each parcel shall be. In this case, then, to make the rezoning that's requested consistent with the comprehensive plan, this map specifically of the comprehensive plan has to be amended. Right now, the comprehensive plan, future land use map, identifies the parcel to develop as mixed residential, and a salon, which is classified as a general service-type use, would not match the mixed residential classification, and the rezoning request would not match the mixed residential classification. Therefore, the first of two requests is to reclassify the property to a different land use planning category. In this case, when staff took a look at the surrounding properties, the surrounding land use, land uses, much of which is talked about in the staff report, we felt as though inappropriate classification would be a mixed-use district. The mixed-use district is found in other areas along Eighth Street, where you have commercial-type category bordering a residential-type category, and it's important with regards to land use and zoning, to have some sort of transitional district between a higher-intense commercial use and a lower-intense residential use. In this case, I think the current classification, mixed residential, or a mixed-use classification would be fitting, because they both do the same thing, which is, again, provide that transitional land use category from the higher-intense commercial to a lower-intense residential. And basically, each category is defined in the staff memo, but basically, mixed residential, the definition is for an area of wider range of housing type, single-family, two-family, and multifamily, and townhomes with up to four units. This area may also include lands designated for environmental protection and compatible uses. And with regards to the mixed-use definition, mixed uses are areas for a complementary mix of residential and commercial land uses. Over time, most of the land uses will be commercial in nature. The area may also include lands designated for environmental protection and compatible civic uses. I referenced earlier, other areas along Eighth Street, where the land use classification is mixed use, and you'll see up on the screen there, where I've identified the property on the south side of that picture, and then the other mixed-used areas along the commercial corridor of Eighth Street. So, to me, it seems appropriate to reclassify this as mixed use. I think, again, given the surrounding uses with commercial, the motel, the church, I think you're somewhat limiting and deterring the property from being developed for any sort of residential, and therefore, I think mixed use is most appropriate, which would allow for lower-intense-type commercial uses, like offices, clinics, things of that nature. So, for the first request, again, I would recommend the mixed-use classification for the comprehensive plan, and if you want, I can continue on to my recommendation for the rezoning request, or I can pick that up after the first item has been acted on.
Why don't we just take one item at a time?
Okay.
So, hearing that, commissioners, any thoughts? I guess anybody else have anything to say?
Historically, the Eighth Street corridor and the side street part of it, have we had known things like this come up over the years, and traditionally, they've all been approved, you know, having some kind of commercial, there's a concern of a commercial creeping into the neighborhoods there, but in this case, it makes a lot of sense, but it's right next to another commercial. Listen to me.
Could somebody summarize what he just said?
Mr. Burkhardt, you were cutting it out, so we weren't quite, we couldn't quite hear you.
Oh. In some way, this topic has come up many times over the years on the Eighth Street corridor, and historically, they all go forward, you know, and it's good to have businesses coming in, into a vacant site there. I think it makes sense.
Is he in favor of it, or against it?
He's speaking, he's speaking in favor. Yep. So, I guess, committee, what's your thoughts on switching this from, updating the map to include the classification to a commercial or a mixed use? Because currently, Mr. Kearns, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, under the current, well, and this is just an update on the map, so it doesn't really have anything to do with the zoning or anything like that at this time, correct? Or, I'm just trying to figure why we need to take them up as separate items, because one, we're updating the map, and then, the next time, we're updating a zoning?
Right. The first standard of review for a rezoning request is consistency with the comprehensive plan. Right now, the classification shown up on the screen with the green circle around it, which is the property, identifies it as mixed residential. So, again, tanning salon, which is a general service-type use, would not, or a rezoning to a commercial-type use that allows for a general service, would not be consistent with what's currently on the comprehensive plan land use map, which is mixed residential. Because the mixed residential as defined, I think I read it, defined here, it identifies areas for wider range of housing types, including single-family, two-family, and multifamily, and townhomes with up to four units. So, again, nowhere does it reference any sort of commercial-type use on that property, and therefore, if we were to rezone it to a commercial zoning district, it would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Go ahead, sir, come on up. This isn't a public hearing on the rezoning, so we're, we've kind of got two different things going on at first. As he said, the first, what we're talking about is basically the map.
That's what I want to look at, the map.
Okay, come on up.
If he'd go back with the map, where he showed the parcel directly across it as a multi-use residential?
Mr. Kearns, can you update? He's looking for the map that, I'm sorry, go ahead and repeat your request.
If you could put back up on this, no, back up to the other one up above it.
This one?
No. Up, page is up.
Here.
There you go. And show, yeah. This map is showing the existing parcel as R3. That's what it is now?
This map does not show zoning, but currently, the rezoning is, yes.
It's zone R3 now?
Correct.
And the property directly across is zoned R3?
I believe that is correct.
So, you've got business, commercial here, then you've got multifamily residential in line with each other, and then you have a transition to residential in the next step. Is that how it stands now?
From a land use standpoint?
Yes, sir.
I believe so, yep. And I think that summarized in, there's a land use table that I've got here that summarizes the surrounding land uses.
Okay. So, go back to the map. This there, right there, no, back down, where you got your zoning colors. So, you got the red, red's commercial, brown is mixed residential, and the yellow is residential, and that's the transition you have. It goes from commercial to multifamilies to residential. Is that what you were talking about before with the transitions?
Correct.
Okay, now, if you make your change, there's no transition there. It goes, it goes commercial, where it is now, and it changes from mixed residential to commercial. So, then it's going directly from commercial to residential with no transition, no melding from one to another, no smooth changes. It's abrupt, and we disagree. We don't want it, the residents don't want it.
Yep, and we can talk at the public hearing.
So, again, mayor, the, and you can still take comment, but the, due to the noticing requirements for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, the public hearing for this item will occur at council. It requires a Class 1 notice thirty days prior, and so when we received the applicant, application, we didn't meet the noticing requirements for the public hearing on this specific item. So, the public hearing after this will be for the rezoning, but certainly, you can still take comments from the public on this item, if you would like.
Okay. I think we could probably hold comments for the public hearing.
They may be relevant for Plan Commission to hear now, if the Plan Commission would entertain hearing comments from the public. It's entirely up to you.
So, does anybody else want to talk about the update of the, okay, come on up, sir? If you could state your name and address.
My name is Arnold Haisley, and I own a rental property, which would be adjacent to the new tanning spa. And I would have to say that I approve of the mixed use. I would have no problem providing a six-foot fence would be built by the tanning company and to divide my land from his. So, and we had talked that we would get together and talk about the length that the fence would be, so that it protects my property. But that fence would be somewhat of a division to residential.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Can you repeat this? I would.
Does anybody else care to speak? Good, sir. Name and address, please.
Darren Brenniger, 551 Airport Avenue. I live in that same area, across the street from where Arnie owns. I wouldn't really, I'm not in favor of anything going in there other than residential. We've been there a number of years, other things have been tried in our neighborhood. Jay used to live in the area. We do get a lot of traffic as it is from Walgreens, and I just don't think that would be a good fit. I don't know how long this business is going to stay open, and it could become something else and a bigger hindrance to our neighborhood. I still have young kids at my house, and I really don't want additional traffic on that road. They're already flying up and down Airport Avenue, and the traffic from Walgreens gets congested in the afternoon, so I'm really opposed to that, and I really appreciated Arnie as a neighbor when he lived in that property, and I realize Arnie does own that, but he doesn't live in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak about the update of the map? Commission, what are your wishes?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to update the map, so we can move this on to the next step in the process.
Okay, we have a motion by Bemke.
Can you clarify what you're looking to update it to? Is it staff's recommendation to mixed use?
Yes. Yep. And then we'll go on, is the public hearing tonight yet done?
For the rezoning, which is the item after.
Correct.
Why do you want to change, sir? I'm not asking for a change, I'm asking for the map to be changed, the zoning of the map. Correct. But we're going, we're going on, the next item will be the zoning, which, when the public hearing, we'll get the public hearing done, and it's just to keep this process, to get to the part of the process, and I think you ought to do that. So, if you move to change the map mapping?
Sir, if you want to speak, we're going to need you to come up to the microphone. Got to maintain some semblance of order.
Patrick Carroll, 541 Airport. Now, you want to change the color of the map to red? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think it's red.
It would be mixed use, which is the green color.
I like the teal.
Teal.
So, you want to change it from residential?
To mixed use.
And why do you want to do that?
What is the property doing now?
Field, wildlife, deer, we see all kinds of wildlife. We don't like it, but they're there.
And honestly, I did used to live in the neighborhood, so I am familiar with the property. It has been sitting base for a long time, and I believe it was cleared, with the ministry of law, of course, that they were going to put it there at that time, so that was their all reason. Either way, I just would like to see, I'm not saying I'm in favor of this, that Danny moved or against it.
I just would like to see the process move along, and move through the process.
You're making one step and making the change, though.
Well...
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And what was your address?
541 Airport.
Where, here?
Next to me, Jay.
Next door, to the west of you, to the, okay, yeah, thank you.
Are there enough empty buildings on Each Street that one...
Yeah, they come up to the microphone. Yeah, there are so many empty buildings in this city that have, businesses have come and gone and grown and closed and expanded, and we're just wondering why there can't be a way of finding an existing building. And I don't know the answers to this. I'm just, I don't hear a dialogue from you people. You're not, you're not asking questions, you're not making suggestions, you're not looking at options.
Well, right now, the options are, we're looking at a vacant, we're looking at a vacant lot that's been vacant for twenty years. We've got a next, we've got an adjacent property owner that I realize does not live there. I just say let it work itself through the process. I lived there when those apartments were built, and I was dead-set against those apartments at the time.
The one, the two H families, or whatever they are now?
Yes, and I will tell you, they turned out to be some of the best neighbors I ever had.
The only problem is five o'clock on a Wednesday morning when they pick up the dumpsters, okay?
I'm just saying, I was against that project when it started, and they turned out to be wonderful neighbors. Can we at least give this an opportunity? I don't know what the...
Can we not leave Walgreens alone?
Apparently not.
Status quo?
Apparently not.
Obviously, you guys want the tax revenue, and that's unfortunate.
Well.
So we have a, a motion right now. We haven't had a second yet to change it to, update the zoning map to mixed use?
Hold on. I guess in the interest of keeping things along, I'll second it, to keep it moving along. Ma'am, did you have something you wanted to?
Yes.
So, if you want to come up to the microphone, state your name.
Thank you. I'm Jane Gannigan, and my husband and I are the ones who own the tanning salon. We have been in business in Wisconsin Rapids for about 25 years now, or we have served Wisconsin Rapids. Where we are located currently, we are in the township of Grand Rapids. We are looking at, because we are a family-owned business, keeping our roots here. We would like to become part of the city, and we have looked at many different buildings. Ours is a service that runs Monday through Friday, and then Saturdays, half a day, Sundays, we're always closed because we are family-run, and we're looking for a more natural setting, not having the busy, you know, A Street is busy enough, and for a lot of clients who do use our facilities, sometimes it's really hard, you know, because of the traffic. A lot of our clientele, the majority is between 30 and 60 years old. The majority of them are under doctors' orders and recommendations to use our facilities for medical, also skin use. So we're looking at making the transition to something a little bit more of a natural setting, a little bit more quieter, so that we keep that, that going with our business. And we are looking to pass this on to our children, so we are looking to keep this going for many years down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So right now, we have a motion, a second. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? So the motion is to approve changing, updating the map to mixed use. So if there's nothing further, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion carried. So now we can move on to the second part of this, is Plan 20-0484, James Gannigan, public hearing in action on a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone 610 and 620 Airport Avenue, parcel ID 3413366 from R3 Multiple Family Medium Density Residential District to B2 General Commercial District or B3 Neighborhood Commercial District. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you. So with regards to the request to a commercial district, again, the applicant has made the request in order to construct the salon. The preliminary site plan has been provided, while it's not necessarily a review criteria, I'll just note that, you know, this is somewhat of what it would look like. If the rezoning does go forward, the applicant would have to come back for a site plan review because it's a new, a new commercial structure. So they would have to define a few more things on the plan and submit a landscaping plan. They'd have to show the fence, for example, that the neighbor has indicated would be installed. But when we review rezonings, we again look at the first review criteria, which is whether or not it is consistent with the comprehensive plan with your recommendation to a mixed use classification. It would be, a rezoning to a commercial district would be consistent. Taking a step further, we look to see whether there are any other planning documents. It doesn't necessarily fall within any other overlay districts. There's not, you know, the downtown overlay or design review district that comes into play. So then we look at what, what are the surrounding zoning districts, what are potential districts that it could be rezoned to that would be fitting, that would protect the character of the neighborhood, and would not be detrimental to the surrounding uses and the surrounding properties. Here are the surrounding uses. Again, you've got R2 District, which is your single-family and two-family uses. You've got medium-density R3, which is what is currently zoned. The property to the north, as indicated, is also zoned R3. The R3 District, again, with the definition there, is intended to accommodate medium-density housing consisting of multifamily buildings and townhomes with three to 15 dwelling units. So, right now, under the current zoning, a developer could come in and request if there was enough land area to construct an apartment with 15 dwelling units within it. And obviously, there'd be the associated parking that would be needed to accommodate those units. And I will note, within this R3 zoning district as well, single-family is prohibited. So again, under the current zoning, single-family is also prohibited. Again, keep in mind, as I mentioned, when we look at a rezoning, we don't necessarily just look at what the request is currently with the salon. We have to think about if the salon goes out of business in 10 years, or they retire in 20 years, what else could be utilized within that facility? And I think if we were to rezone it as commercial, which is the red zoning classification on the map, it would be too intense, meaning that you could have a restaurant or a tavern operate within the building, and I think that would be detrimental to the surrounding property owners with a tavern open till 2:00 a.m. and a restaurant having weekend traffic. So we look at, then, what, what other zoning would be appropriate, and I think that zoning would be the B3 District. The B3 District is intended to accommodate low-intensity commercial uses in a residential setting, which is basically what we have here. We have a transitional zone from high-intensity commercial on 8th Street to a lower-intensity residential, and then we've got, you know, the institutional use with the church to the south, and then obviously the commercial motel to the south and to the east. With that being said, we take a close look at, again, the surrounding zoning, which I described. Here's the zoning map. Again, the blue is institutional, and the, the red is the commercial B2. And then we look at uses. So at the, at the back of the packet, I put together a list of uses to compare what uses would be permitted and/or what would be conditional within these districts. So you can see, on the left, the R3 District is highlighted, which is the current zoning classification, and then on the right, I've highlighted the B2 District, which is primarily all the zoning on 8th Street, as well as the B3 District, which is what I would recommend rezoning the property to. And you can see that the only type of mixed-use housing, or the only type of residential housing within the B3 District here is mixed-use housing and a single-family dwelling, whereas in the R3 District, under the current zoning, you have several different types of housing, whether permitted or conditional, that are allowed to occur. And then as you go further down the list, you can see, again, with B3 being here, it would permit, for example, an adult-family home or community living arrangement, as well as a foster home. A group daycare center would be a conditional use, a nursing home would be conditional use, and then, you know, it's very limited from there. Whereas, again, if you look at the R3 District on the far left, you know, a boarding house right now, a tourist rooming house, a retirement home is also permitted as a conditional use under the current district. So again, this is really a, a good tool to use in comparing those uses. The last thing I want to point out with regards to the uses is commercial, right? So again, the intent of the mixed-use district is to allow for low-intense commercial uses, such as financial services, that would be like a law firm or an investment company, as well as, as you can see, a funeral home or general services and healthcare clinics. So healthcare clinic, like a dental office. I think the thought here with the creation of this district is most of these uses are a nine-to-five operation. If they're open on the weekends, you know, they're not open Saturday, Sunday, you know, 9:00 a.m. to midnight. They're, they're less intense commercial-type uses, and as you can see within some of these categories here, you know, like veterinarian clinic, you still have to get a conditional use, which means coming before this body, which is an added realm of protection. If, for example, you know, the salon leaves and a veterinarian clinic does want to come in, they have to come through this body, we can place restrictions on their operation, the hours of operation. We can look at, you know, fencing and vegetation to provide for a buffer, if, again, you know, they wanted to, you know, have dogs outside or whatever it may be. And so again, even comparing the B3 District to the B2 District was in, which is in the middle, the uses are, are much, much less in the B3 District than they are in the B2 District, again with the thought that they're very low-intense commercial uses that help to protect the character of the residential neighborhood. So with that being said, we would recommend doing just that and rezoning the property to the B3 zoning district, which is the mixed-use zoning district.
Thank you. I guess at this time, let's open the public hearing. We can start with the people, if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of the request, if you can come up and state your name and address.
Jerry Geishardt, I own the property at 610, 620 Airport. Would the B3 allow what she is asking a permit for?
Correct, oops, corrected.
Yes, it would. It would fall under what's called the general service use. We don't specifically identify salons within our code, so then we have to identify generally what a salon type use is, and it, it would be classified as general service. And if you look up on the screen here, general service is a permitted use within the B3 District.
I just wanted to say that I, I do, I'm all for rezoning the property. We've owned it for a number of years now. We, I verbally had a commercial firm out of Madison do a study, and the highest and best use for that property is commercial. They're familiar with Rapids. They do a lot of development in Stevens Point, central Wisconsin area. The highest and best use is not one or two-family, so that's why we did not go forward with it. It would be more in lines with an apartment building or two small apartment buildings and commercial up front. But for her use and what she's willing to put in there, I think it would be, complement the city growth very well. Just being in real estate for the number of years I have, I know that there's very limited commercial on A Street that is available and affordable to purchase. There may be some vacancies, but in my opinion, it is a few of the big box players that are there, but for the small business, there isn't hardly anything available. So, to welcome new businesses in Wisconsin Rapids right now, I think it is a very smart move for the city to, to welcome anybody that's willing to put a new business in. I know that they own businesses in Stevens Point. They're very successful there. They've been successful here for 25 years, she said. So I don't doubt the fact that they're not going to work with the city to get their plans approved the way that the city would like to see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? And asking for a third time, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the rezoning? Okay, hearing none. Let's start with anybody who wishes to speak against the rezoning. Go ahead, sir. State your name and address again, please.
Darren Brenniger, 551 Airport Avenue. Thank you for saying it wouldn't be disruptive or diminish our neighborhood. You don't live there, we do. I think it would be disruptive, it would diminish our property. I'd been, and I'd be really interested in selling it too if I owned it for the number of years and let it grow as tall as it has and become a hazard for us. We've had to call the cops several times to get people out of there. But putting a business in there isn't what we need in our neighborhood. So that's where I'm at, and like I said, I still have kids that are young. Had a whole bunch of kids in the neighborhood. Me and my family raised eight kids, me and my wife raised eight kids there, and we still have three of them in school. So we're, I am really opposed to this. I've been there, I've been in the city almost 25 years, I've owned this home. So that's, I really don't want to see another business. I already think Walmart, our Walgreens is disruptive. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak against the project, or against the rezoning? Okay, ma'am, state your name and address, please.
Catherine Scherr, 541 Airport Avenue. We don't need another, we, we don't need business in our neighborhood. We, we got a nice little residential thing there, and like Darren said, Walgreens has got enough traffic to make up for five businesses that could be in there. So we just don't need any more, and I know you're going to do it. You know, this is, I'm wasting my time coming up here and talking to you. You've already got it planned on what you want, and there's nothing that we can do or say that's going to change you guys' minds, so, but I feel better telling you. It's a lousy idea.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak against the rezoning? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. All right, I guess we'll open up to the commissioners. Mr. Bemke?
So, so do you have a timeline for your project? Do you have a, we saw your rough site plan. Do you have a plan?
Right, so.
Have you been through the neighborhood yet?
Yes, we, I've actually driven through. I've looked at the areas. You know, like I said, we've looked at other properties and stuff. We would be willing to actually sit down with all of the neighbors before we actually, and nothing would happen until next year at the earliest, so it would remain the way it is. We would be willing to sit down with the neighbors to talk about, because we do want to keep as much green space there as we can, keep it very limited, driveway in one way, driveway out the other way, and to keep it where we look like we're more part of the residential than a commercial building. You know, so anything, you know, and we would be willing to, you know, why we're also asking to be rezoned for a low commercial, or low impact commercial, is because we don't want the prospect of a bar or tavern or a restaurant where you have, you know, five times the amount of traffic coming and all hours of the night. We want to keep it limited where it is very, you know, keep that residential, because we wouldn't want something like that in, you know, next to us either. We want to, you know, really think about the residents as well.
Do you, do you have a time of day that's busier than other times of day? And typically, on a typical day, how many people do you expect in and out of there?
So, at our busiest time, we see, and this is from like 9:30 in the morning until like 7:00 or 8:00 at night, 9:30 is my busiest time of day, no doubt. And then from 3:00 to 5:00 can be another busy time of the day. And we're looking at possibly, you know, off-season, we're looking at anywhere from 30 to 60 people a day, and that's, you know, like right now, during the summertime, in the fall time, where people are going to be out more, is when we are the slowest. We're talking about during the wintertime that we are the busiest, but by 6, 7:00 o'clock at night, we're pretty much, you know, that's it. Sundays, like I said, we're never open on Sundays, and that will remain because we are family-owned. And Saturday until 2:00, maybe 4:00 at the latest, so that by the time it gets to be later in the day, we're done with the business.
Okay, so 9:30 to 6:00 typically your busiest, and up to possibly 60 people a day?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Sir?
Hi, I'm Jim Gannigan, and I just want to say to, you know, the neighbors, you know, you know, we want to, I'm putting myself in your spot, you know? And that's why we want to keep it as natural without disturbing that area. So we want to keep it natural. We like nature. We like to see the deer. We like the place, the way it looks. And we want to keep it as natural as possible. And that's all I got to say to you.
And you're supposed at 7:00?
Right.
Yeah. During the week, so, no, 7:00 during the week. During a, like, we have a couple months out of the year, like February, March.
Where it'd be maybe 8:00?
But that, that's the latest that we ever go.
Because our busy time is from, say, starting in January, but mainly February, March, April. It starts kind of dwindling a lot.
And then by the time you hit May, we've really gone down. Summertime, you know, like I said, 30.
We can't compete against the sun. So we don't have the business during the summertime. So.
And we do have plans, like I said, if, you know, depending now, once we do, you know, talk to the city about what our, the city codes are for requiring, whether there's a sidewalk in front or not, you know, keeping as much of that, you know.
We want to keep it, we want to keep it green.
Yes.
It seems the city's already made up their mind, based on my discussions and what I'm hearing here. With that in mind, the positive impact of a dialogue amongst.
Oh, for sure.
Not a monologue, not, not one-way, but a group dynamic. Wouldn't that be very favorable?
Now, she would like to say something.
And we can, we can set up a time. We can contact you. Like I said, we're not going to do anything per year. But we can contact you prior to even starting our site plan and talk to you and say, hey, this is what we're thinking and.
We'd like to see you do it once. Every time you walk into an architect's office or you go to talk to an engineer.
So everybody, we probably should not have, have this dialogue back and forth, being that the people online, they can't hear it without microphones. So if you want to have a dialogue, we should at least probably do it through the microphone so the other commissioners and attendees online can hear. So we don't have to repeat everything.
There's nothing going to change.
Well, can I just stay here with you to make sure that they can hear you? This is our daughter Julianne, who is with me pretty much every day at the business.
We, we want to say, say yes to keep, keep all land, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Any more questions, comments? Okay, go ahead, Ms. B. Oh, go ahead, Ms. B.
I guess I have two comments. One is the preliminary site plan for the lot of Blacktop, right on Airport Avenue, which is something that we just looked at in another case to try to reduce. And the second thing, and this is probably a question directed at Jerry Geishardt, it's a very deep lot. And I'm wondering what the condition of the back area is and whether or not, when we do a rezoning, what are the regulations with regard to subsequent structures on the property?
Mr. Geishardt has stepped out. So he's not, he's not in the room at the moment. Mr. Kearns?
So with regards to other structures, you know, again, the use table would come into play. For example, again, you know, some of the big differences between the uses are on the commercial spectrum and then the residential. You'll see here, under the current zoning, you've got several multifamily uses and townhouse uses and a twin home. But you can't build a, a single-family home under the current zoning. Versus the, the proposed zoning of B3, you can build a single-family home as a permitted use. But the only type of mixed-use or the only type of multifamily housing you can have is mixed-use, meaning that the, the housing has to be part of a primary use and attached to the physical building, which, you know, for example, we find in our downtown where you have commercial on the first floor and residences above. That's the only type of multifamily housing that's permitted in the B3 District. And so, you know, if there are other uses that want to occur over time, as long as they're permitted and/or conditional within the district, they can be requested by the applicant. For example, if five or 10 years down the road, they wanted to put an addition on and create a second suite for a second user, they could do that. But that second user, that use, would have to match the B3 zoning district standards for uses that you see as part of the packet or up on the screen. And it would also have to go to Plan Commission for Site Plan Review.
Thank you. Mr. Geishardt's back in the room again. Ms. Beth had some questions about, if you could repeat it for Mr. Geishardt.
Jerry, I was just wondering, that's a very deep lot. And I've never walked the back section of it. I was wondering what the geography was back there and what opportunities that lot presents besides what is pictured in the preliminary plans of the standing lot.
I guess I don't understand.
He's quite not sure what you're asking.
She was looking at, like, the back. Like, she hasn't looked in the back here, but like what the condition is of the property back here.
Well, the, the whole depth of the lot, it's, it's all level. It's pretty much the same as up front. What it, what it joins it to the, which would be to the east is commercial all the way along the, the east lot line. But it, it's pretty consistent from the front to back.
In other words, it's buildable all the way to the back lot line?
Absolutely. There was a, a small finger of land that came in from the west side that was considered to be flood zone. And we worked with FEMA. And that was removed from that flood, as a flood zone. So that's, that's all been removed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
What's that?
Mr. Terry. So, don't mean to put you on the spot, but after what was described for the, the business, the times of day and the seasons, overview of the impact on traffic there.
Yeah, I think with the volume of business that's projected, the, the traffic impact would be very minimal.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners?
I guess I, myself, I spoke with the couple over there. When was it, last week, I believe we spoke? And, and I told you that I think my biggest concern at that time was the potential for a bar or something that may not be the best use for that area. Speaking of, on all intents purposes, I have a hard time not favoring a, a business that's currently in front of us. But I had a harder time thinking about what it could be and the concerns in the neighborhood, what it could be down the road. I, I too grew up in that area, just around the street on Lincoln Street. Spent my whole childhood in that crick down there. But after talking to Mr. Kearns today and hearing that, that under this zoning, it's impossible to have a bar or a restaurant.
Just change, so maybe I do is come in and request to be screened too?
Nope. Under this, under, under this zoning, well, under the current zoning, correct. But under the current zoning, the B3 zoning, you cannot, you cannot have a, a bar or a restaurant in that location or, or a fast-food store or. So for me, and I, I don't live there currently. I think about my own neighborhood and, and the variety of zoning that's in my very own neighborhood. But, you know, with, that alleviates my concern of a bar or restaurant going in there because it's not permitted use. And so my concern about what would be there and the impact to the neighborhood, I think is less than a potential of an apartment building or some of the other options under an R3. I think a B3 softens that zoning, that transition, whether it be like commercial or heavier residential. I, I think either way. And that, as far back as I can remember, that has been a vacant lot. And I think this is a good, if there's going to be a use, I think this is a good use for that parcel. That's just my thoughts.
With that in mind, I'd recommend, or motion to convert it to B3 as proposed.
We have a motion to change the zoning to B3. Is there a second? I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. We'll give Ms. Beth a second. So the motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. Actually, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any oppose? Motion carried. The final item on our agenda is adjournment. We have a motion by Bemke. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Have a good night.
Thank you.